Okay, good evening councillors and welcome to tonight's full council. Following our recess, hopefully you all had a lovely summer and welcome back. Agenda item one, apologies.
Yes, Mr May, we received apologies from the Deputy Mayor, Councillor Woodward, and councillors Kev Abbott, Leanne McSparan, Colin Sharp, Yvonne Southwell and Guy Woodham and the Town Clerk, Mrs Fitzgerald.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, just to add that obviously the clerk isn't here and is unwell once again, so she will be in and out as required. So, just as before, could you just please include the secretary into comms, just so nothing's missed? And of course, we send Babs our best wishes and recovery as always. Agenda item two then, declarations of interest. I'll start with item number seventeen B. I, as a personal declaration for the Milford Sea Cadets and Royal Marine Cadets, as you all know, my partner is the commanding officer and I'm also a volunteer in the wider organisation, but I do reserve the right to comment and vote. Any other, Councillor Hammetts? Thank you. Any other declarations of interest? Sorry, Councillor Bridges? Yeah. Thank you. Councillor Sinne? Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, just to clear that against the torch theatre group application, Councillor Sinne won't be able to vote or comment. Okay, agenda item three, question and answer session with members of the public. Madam Secretary, have I received any?
No, we haven't, Mr May.
Agenda item four, news from the mayor. Unfortunately, councillor Gray isn't with us this evening, but I just wanted to share our sympathy on behalf of the council with councillor Gray on the passing of her mum recently. We send her our best wishes to her and the family at this sad time. And to our best wishes to the Chair of the Royal British Legion, Rob Duncan, who's currently unwell. And I hope that he has a speedy recovery and I'm sure we'll see him soon. Agenda item five is the mayor's engagements. None has been shared and I have to admit that I haven't completed anything with Fiona, but equally I haven't done a great deal in August due to my capacity with work. Once I get this back up to date, we'll share this in next month's full council. Agenda item six then, council engagements and community activities. They were shared by the secretary today. And obviously, I know councillor Hammett has been busy baking. The pictures look great. But I hear you, you know, you quite picked the win, but from comments I viewed, you were robbed on the day, yeah. Are there any additions to that email from activities? No. Agenda item seven then, feedback from councillor representation on outside bodies, so verbal updates. Any outside body representation recently? Okay, Councillor Bridges? Yeah. Okay, agenda item eight, questions about debate pursuant to standing order number six.
We haven't received any, Mr May.
I knew we wouldn't. Agenda item nine, minutes of the meeting of the full council held on the twenty first of July, twenty twenty five, page thirty eight. Councillor Bridges? Yeah, thank you. Otherwise, minutes as a whole? Yeah, move receipt all secondar? And then all those in favour? Okay, thank you. Agenda item ten then, the Public Events Subcommittee held on the second of September. And because it's a subcommittee, we'll go page by page, so page forty six, page forty seven, page forty eight, page forty nine. Okay, that minutes as a whole, Councillor Jones? I'll take that. Secondar? All those in favour? Oh, anyone against? Yeah, so we would accept those recommendations in the minutes. The only one that wouldn't be is the Christmas trees, which is the next agenda item. I think they were accepted, so I'll just do that again for clarity. So all those in favour of the minutes? Yeah, anyone abstaining? I think that was it. Thank you. So, agenda item eleven then is the Christmas trees in Milford Haven, which as you can see was deferred from the Public Events Subcommittee to us. We're requested to consider the following quotes, which you'll have in your agenda pack, from mounted farm, Ken Park, festive trees and elder meadows nursery. Councillor Bridges?
If one specifies that they include VAT and delivery of equipment, the other two don't clarify that. So, at the moment, we're not actually sure who is the best value for the quote based on if the other two have been included. They aren't included in VAT in those prices. There was one standout if, in fact, they aren't included in VAT.
Is that MGC?
They were standing out when you were including VAT, but not if they were just. So, there is a bit of uncertainty of who the better quote would be. We just asked for that to be clarified, but we should have.
I'm afraid I don't know, councillor Bridges. Sorry, I don't know if it's been clarified.
Okay, councillor Stevens? Madam Secretary, would you happen to know who we've used in previous years?
We have. We've used Elder Meadows Nursery in Houbstone. Oh.
And they are very local. The two trees.
Stankton and Town Hall. Yes, yes.
I believe two trees.
Yes.
No, I think Houbstone have taken over their own.
And we're not, haven't got Market Square this year either. Yes, Stankton, yes, yep.
Trying to see if it was in the minutes. Okay, so for those that were at the meeting, because I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, was it two trees we were looking for, Stankton and the one outside Town Hall? Or was there a Houbstone one included?
No, I don't think Houbstone. Yep. Yep.
Okay, so it's just one of the quotes. It has two trees, which is why I'm saying it's two, I guess. And obviously the clerk's not here, nor is the chair of the subcommittee.
We have a full council meeting on the twenty second of September. I don't know if it could, if the mayor, if you think we could divert until then or?
Is there a cut off date to order?
I'd not, I'd have to ask the clerk to be honest. I don't, I wouldn't think so, but I would have to double check with the clerk.
Okay. The seventh should be fine. Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, so I think read in the room unless there's another recommendation, we defer to the twenty seconds meeting. And in that time, ask the secretary to clarify VAT and delivery charges for all three all three quotes, and we also clarify how many trees and where they're actually going. Yeah. Unless there's any amendments, would someone like to second my proposal? There was lots of seconds there, so all in favour? Okay, thank you very much. So, agenda item twelve then is representation on outside bodies. Twelve A being the additional community governor at Galerswick B C School. Just to share that, and you'll see that within the email trail, actually councillor Southwell's formerly been our additional community governor for Galerswick. And for those that don't know, she's actually moved, which technically takes her outside of the remit. There is a wider discussion with the elections office around whether she can remain to be a councillor. So she may want to continue in that role if she does remain as a councillor, but we don't know what the rule is. But either way, we have to put it forward to council. Councillor Jones? Yeah. Yeah. Is that self nomination there councillor Abbott? Would you like to be the additional? Yeah. So, I'll ask again, are you confirming your self nomination? Perfect. Right, do we have a secondar for councillor Abbott then? Yeah. Okay, so unless there's any other nominations, all those in favour of councillor Abbott? Congratulations. That was an easy one. Twelve B then is the additional community governor at the Milford Haven Community Primary School. Councillor Stevens?
Communities, let's have a look at the emails. Fifth of August, the emails from the fifth of August.
Just to check in our last full council.
Yeah, they want nomination by fourteenth of September. Yeah.
Are you sure it wasn't the secondary school? Or Saint Francis maybe? Was it Saint Francis?
I can't remember. It just sounds vaguely familiar, but this was sent in August, beginning of August.
Okay, let's, I think, let's defer that and ask the secretary to investigate whether that is an actual role. And because as I think about it, I can recall actually us discussing this one.
Yep.
Yeah, yes. I think because we've had a few recently. Right, we'll defer that one then. Right, agenda item thirteen, letter from councillor Eddie Davis regarding traffic concerns in Stighton, so please see attached. It does say for information only because this letter was addressed to the chief exec of the council. Don't know if you want to add anything, councillor Davis?
The secretary did reply to me and said that Mr Brown was on holidays and she could bring it to his attention whenever he returned, so I don't know where he's gone on holidays. So, a week with bacon breath.
Yeah, okay, so we'll move the seat on that. Councillor Sinne? So, agenda item fourteen then is what constitutes entering private session. Please see attached email from One Voice Wales, so as you'll have heard from discussing the council minutes from July. We obviously went into private session and we were requested to just reshare this email from last year. So, as you'll see reading that, we didn't actually require that or need to go into private session, sorry I couldn't give it to him then. Councillor Stevens? Yeah. Yeah.
So, when you have a matter of five or more minutes, yes, what you're doing is completely core confidence. However, that does not apply to public sector employees that should have total transparency. What she has said in one aspect is correct. The employee should not be named.
Yeah.
However, as I quite rightly point out, it's very easy to remember the topics, to ascertain who we are talking about.
Yeah.
However, it should be pointed out that we are being rewarded. We have been given quite clear guidance, very bodied up, we are heading home, I think, of information from. Ultimately, they have been quite clear in what they've said. And that rule, which has just been mentioned, in no way applies to public sector employees.
Councillor Stevens? Yeah, so, sorry councillor Stevens, I think, just listening to that then, that's specifically referring to councillors, so us or county council, not employees. Yeah, but the independent remuneration panel for Wales states that, yeah. Yeah, although our employees aren't county council employees. Okay, councillor Hammett? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, councillor Hartwell? Yeah. Yeah, we. Yeah, we. Yeah, you're right, as we always try and say, it's the role, it's not the person. I mean, we have to take the person out of that when we discuss the role of roles, don't we?
And I think the importance of transparency is there all the time, especially on, you know, on any level of government. When was this incident, where I completely confused you not being an employee? Time prior to that, I spoke to lift salary in line of matching minimum wage. And I was quite advocating, you know, the only message it set by us going private session about we were hiding something.
Yeah.
We were only raising it in line with our mandatory legal requirement, which was particularly appropriate. So, the whole purpose of meeting is in private session. I mean, here, that was something behind, something behind. And again, it is, I'm pretty, because I should still support the issue that was discussed in that private session. However, you know, again, it was nothing that nothing sensitive, as councillor Hartwell just said, as all the meeting, we didn't want to refer to the individual name. I just wanted to be advocating that, and it was like, you know, over the last, I don't know, it's three meetings, four meetings, we have gone in private session against diamonds on the watch wheels. I just want councillors to be a little mindful that, you know, the more transparent we are, the better, and that's generally my opinion.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree. And I think if you compare over the years, we are certainly not using private session anywhere near it compared to what we used to be. But it is still a learning curve, I think. But, you know, absolutely right for reiterating it. So, unless there's any further comment, are we happy to move receipt and move forward on that? All those in favour? Thank you. Agenda item fifteen, planning matters. So fifteen A is the planning applications, which are for information only. But any comments? Councillor Stevens? Yeah.
I'm afraid I don't, I'm so, I'm so sorry. We did, I know we did speak about this earlier. I'm afraid, I'm afraid I don't know. I'm afraid that might, I don't know if that would have been before my time.
Councillor Sinne? Because I think it's before my time. No, I can't.
Oh, sorry, Mr. It was, I think it was slightly before my time. We had a councillor who didn't like wind turbines at all. And this sort of being, was it two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, maybe something like that?
Must have been a bit earlier, because I don't know any of the conversation. Councillor Bridges?
No. That was one of them, I was quite considerate of how many were left, because ultimately, one of the positions you're having to oppose is the Asian, the the science, the politics, the back of. So ultimately, with the neighbouring population, I mean, it's all the new years yet, I think, there an objection to that. So ultimately, it was a big, you know, it's a kind of action, and anyway, despite the development, if that was a residence, who wishes to represent everybody?
Councillor Jones? Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. So, I think then we just move the seat, because there will be recommended approval. So, all those in favour? Anyone against or abstaining? That was quite interesting. Okay. Fifteen B then are the planning notifications, i.e. the decisions made by provincial council. Bar one, which was withdrawn, they're all conditionally approved. So unless there's any comments, I would recommend move receipt. Yeah, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Agenda item sixteen, cemetery reports made to July twenty twenty five, please see attached. Waiting for a question on the electricity. Oh, it's not on that one. Okay, we've had move receipt, a secondar? Yeah, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Right, agenda item seventeen, financial matters. Seventeen A is acknowledgement of donations. We've had acknowledgement from the Rotary Club of North Haven, Paul Satori Foundation, Northford Haven Museum. And although not a grant, from Galerswick Community Choir, where we gave them a small donation for their assistance in the VE Day. So, seventeen B is applications for financial assistance and the first application are the Milford Haven Sea Cadets and Royal Marine Cadets, who've got their application and supporting documentation attached. Yeah. Councillor Hartwell?
And I noted that this time there were issues in trying to attach the six months.
Yeah. Yeah.
I thought quite long, um, I can tell them one either my piece more. That's fine, and the point, the point I'm making, I'm with a right with a little impression. That when we spoke about it, we thought that perhaps the bank statement goes straight to Clark's office.
Yeah.
And not to be shared amongst email, it just, it it's go back to the whole GDPR thing, if those bank statements.
I think that was in a. I'd have to go back and have a look at one of the previous minutes from, it would have been the grant review, I think, or maybe the first review by the full council. But I'm sure we seeked advice from One Voice Wales, and it was acceptable. Yeah. Yeah. You can come back and like, I started on.
Um, and I do, I do, obviously, can use the deduction, however.
Based on all the bank statements. Ultimately, it's a thing, I think it's an incredibly valuable resource. We've already agreed in policy, our policy is to review the twelve months' average and sections we've agreed. But I certainly wouldn't want the statements to be held clear then, because that would involve every councillor going into the office to see them. It would then probably negate a lot of councillors' ballroom activity. Whereas at the moment, now that you are reviewing those documents, as another councillor directly said, which you view, you know, people are right, it is. You are responsible, you're the councillor, the beaming for when you are getting a set of emails and documents, you should want a product.
Councillor Jones? So you had your hand up, that's what I've come back to. Yeah. But. Okay, councillor Hartwell?
I just want to say, I hundred percent agree that that organisation should be given there, and I hope no, no issue with that whatsoever. My issue is the sharing and you can't guarantee that, like we are, as I said, we have moved to a more secure system. But there have been instances in the past where events have been, they have been accessed. But I just think that when we are accessing the information, the proposal that you did suggest, no, nobody will ever bring it in. And possibly it is a one where there's been a review rather than downloading. It's the downloading issue I have from.
It would also make it easier for the office to send out files. Yeah, because that's sometimes the issue, isn't it, the bounce backs?
If you do it then, shall we, you know, download it on you.
Yeah.
The device.
I thought I was. Do you need bank statements in part of minutes immediately?
No, they, oh, sorry, Mr. Minot.
I'm looking too small by saying I didn't say it to you.
The bank statements, I, I didn't on this occasion because of this year's site, because of how many bank statements we have.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't.
Um, but to be honest, um, it, so on occasion, some councillors, they still have the paper copies of, of the packs.
No, sorry, no, I think, I think, I think the question is, when the, when this meeting's completed, the minutes that are then produced, will the bank statements be included?
No, they won't, no, apologies, no, no, they won't.
Councillor Senate?
Some debate, actually, my only issue too, and it is. The account number and sort code is.
That's the.
Um, when I look at the data, and I'm looking at the.
Good point.
Of state, the statements, but, you know, with the, with the account name and numbers and everything. Were able to deduct the account number. So.
Yeah. Right, so I think out of that discussion, there's a couple of things. Uh, the Clark and Secretary review, how, how, how we share that information. Also to make that easier, rather than, I think it was six or seven emails and fill on top of it. The, the redaction bit, as, as we discussed, and the, a GDPR policy, having looked at our policies quickly, actually, we don't have that other than social media, uh, policy, so. Yeah, so I'll pick up those, um, moving forward. So going back to this application in hand then from, oh, sorry, councillor Stevens.
Okay. Every time somebody tries to find me, they also apply a bank statement. Therefore, what you seem, if she stick to the rule, is your bank statement, you don't get the rule.
That is absolutely the, the, the prerequisites. Um, sorry, and I've just realised that one thing I didn't share with you before is actually how much we've got in the pot. Um, so, Kim, I keep pushing it across the table. Um, so we're in our, uh, funding pot, we currently have twenty five thousand, five hundred pounds remaining. So moving on to the applications then, the B I S, North Tamerati Cadets and Royal Marine Cadets, asking for six thousand, seven hundred and thirty seven pound forty, to be exact. Um, yeah, councillor Senate?
Yeah. We've got twenty five.
Yeah, twenty five and a half. We don't set them anymore, the, as applications come in. Yeah. And Christmas donations don't come out of that pot. Councillor Jones? Yes, uh, and something else, what was it? A hundred and twenty folding chairs that are cushioned, seated back, uh, and s- six, uh, storage cupboards. Just checking, and obviously they have included the quotes, so. Um, so Stevens, was that your hand up then? Yeah, I thought it was.
Um, I'm sorry, I missed what was said, so.
Thank you.
I, I, you've moved that all night, haven't you? Especially I put it on the floor, councillor Davis, yeah, okay. Right, so any, any comments?
Oh, if any, also, if people would like to look at the paper, that would be useful.
There's one paper copy that shared. Uh, it, it, that's the only one, so you'll have to share it. No, no.
I'm just, yeah.
Ah, you didn't have a, because you were, it was the paper. Councillor Senate?
No, I've been, yeah. That's a lot of our.
Mm hmm. Do you recommend any amount and directive then, just to help decisions?
Not at this.
Not at this time. Others say, yes. Councillor Jones?
Sorry, Mr. Minot, we've given the councillors a few minutes, just a quick look at the application, they're passing it around.
For me. There is a paper over there, yes.
Yeah.
Can you put an apology down?
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't know whether there's a time pressure, the, uh, getting. I would say just a little.
Um, just to add to that. The owner's shared with me, sorry, Madame Secretary's shared with me, that one of the companies that is offering the discount, it's only valid until the first of October. There is potential the cost could go up slightly. Councillor Bridges?
Very. Application, because reality is that I want to support the sea cadets in a sense I believe in my personal job, but you do. That will say, I have to mirror what councillor Jones says, in a sense that this doesn't appear to be the one to want in this application, in a sense that it's not necessarily, you know, existing with chairs. In my, in my opinion, uh, even though it would be nice to enhance them, I think that when we were talking about that application process and maybe other applicants who might have more. Need.
Councillor? Yeah.
Been, so this application, you want to get a balance here, but. It's without me, the application is going to come as well than me saying flat, no, now, however, at the moment, I would be supportive of the request.
Thanks, Vic, yeah, councillor Hartwell?
What being said, is it possible, councillor Senate, about the enhancing pens, that we should maybe look at that? If they've not, they've gone to other avenues of support, enhancing pens does seem like one that could be deferred. Um, see if the funds could be sought from there and then perhaps come back later down.
I mean, yes, potentially, I, I obviously can't tell you whether they're, they're already in the process of applying for a different project, so. It, it could end up coming back to us sooner rather than later if they are already applying. But yeah, I think that's a, a sound motion. Councillor Stevens?
Thank you. You're marvelous, uh, you do a lot of work for young people and you're advancing all the time, you're improving. And to get off, we both have thunder, I do support sea cadets and what you're doing, they're doing.
They're doing.
And it's something, you know, and they're always achieving something, they're always doing something, and you know what they're doing, because it's on Facebook. It's why I should know what means a sea cadet, so I think I agree with how many hundred of the young people.
Councillor Hartwell? Say that again, sorry. Not, not upholstery, so. Oh, cupboards, yeah, so. Yeah, I guess, so, so. All I can say is in the application, I'll, I'll just read out this bit in the purpose, so the purpose of the grant is to purchase the new upholstered folding chairs, utilizing the existing wrap, which obviously we can see. We're hosting more groups and organisations and general feedback, including from their own cadets, is that they're uncomfortable, as in the ones we're sitting on. Uh, we also considered functionality and the ability to store them without being too bulky, and so a similar design with a cushioned seat and back with a blue upholstery fitting in with the sea cadet theme. Uh, and in addition, we need more storage and have included six, uh, metal covers to help with this around the building, so, well, I, I, I absolutely agree, you know, it's, it's. Uh, what, what did you say? Uh, it, yeah, it's a, it's a cosmetic purchase, but obviously it's fitting for sea cadets and other groups that use it, including us, who have complained about the chairs on, so. It, you know, it is, it is what it is. The other thing I would say is if we did support this, whatever it might be, we should also ask. For some of these chairs, um, because we borrow them for remembrance, et cetera, so one of the conditions could be that we ask for twenty, thirty, forty, I don't know how many we normally ask for cheers. But equally, you know, I think councillor Senate does make a, a good argument over. A, um, got the term is now match funding, a match, match funding approach.
So children, children will settle, take along our country play, you know, they're concentrating on the good in the studies, particularly curriculums. So I think even when a working environment is nothing better than having company.
Hold on, there's three of them.
Well, there's, there's a number of, uh, there are no real recommendations, but number of discussions, so I guess we need to come up with a recommendation. Uh, or, or several, to decide on the vote.
May it help?
Yeah.
Possibly, um, if we could, um, like to the sea cadets, um, asking them to make inquiries with, uh. Uh, Hampshire County Council around suitability of this, okay, for enhancing penmanship grant.
Mm hmm.
Um, if it's rejected, then, 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 uh, we can bring it back in, um, in a suitable. Meaning. As part of that process, if they were able to say that in principle, and, um, if they, their council would provide some match funding, uh, uh. For. To. To twenty, thirty percent. Not if that money, let's.
It doesn't, yeah. So recommendation then is we, uh. Go back to the sea cadets, recommend that they contact the enhancing penmanship grant. Apartment, whatever the, the term might be, team, um, to see if the project can be supported through the enhancing penmanship, uh, grant. As it requires match funding, in principle, if it's supported or, or possible, then we would provide match funding up to twenty to thirty percents. Um, of which roughly equates up to the maximum of two and a half thousand, so. Up to two thousand pounds match funded. Do you have a second for that? Any amendments before I put that to vote? All those in favour? Anyone against? Uh. Agenda item B two then is the torch theatre. Oh, you do, yes, we'll call you back in shortly. Just wait for councillor Senate to leave. Yeah, I can answer. Oh, sorry. He, he may not, no, because he's there as a trustee.
Sorry.
He's gone downstairs, I think it's fine, yeah. Okay, councillor Davis?
Where are we saying that they've already had a five thousand pound grant for twenty four, twenty five?
Last financial year.
Um, twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah, so that, that would have finished in March, end of March, this twenty five, twenty six financial year now. Councillor Stevens?
I'm doing enough already, the torch is private company, it's running in the cause. And I'm concerned by the supporting the business. That's what I'm asking, why should we support a business?
That's down to us to decide, yeah.
I took you funding by the paper group.
Yeah.
And we seem to be almost funding business.
They are, they are a registered charity, which is why we were able to support them.
Charity.
An arts charity. I had to think about that. I, I, I mean, that, that aside, it, it, you know, it, it, we're, it's in our gift to decide, um. Whether we want to support the grant application or not. Councillor Stevens Junior?
Do you support them or not support them because they care, but they rely on us and they're seeing all the people funding. Because it happens before, we never, we were.
Mm hmm. Yeah, yeah, I do, I mean, in, in this particular example, um, the grant is towards. Uh, seven hundred and forty nine children, roughly fifty four teachers or LSAs attending the pantomime this year, so it's been. Supported, I don't know without looking into the detail if that means those spaces are free completely to the young people, or whether there's then a, a long going cost. There's lots of hands up now, so councillor Bridges?
As said, actually, moving the bank statement towards our application is quite enlightening, not. I would be very careful not to use any particular word, which I believe in the balance, but. If all just spending consistently more, we're trying to remain, there is a word for that, I'm not going to use it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, ultimately. Before I go further on that, I'm not trying to say that that should in any way. Change decision, because the reality is based on the reason they asked me for the funds, I, I do want to support it, because the reality is. Looking at the cemetery as a whole, um, I'm not saying there is a cemetery, but, you know, the, the theatre company, I mean, I understand it's incredibly strong, and if we. Support our local theatre, then I'm sure they will hold a picture in any other part of the country, and the reality of it is, uh, you know, very. Um. Well thought, established, we're going to town, it was great job, you know, it goes with acting, you're asking top. Theatre company, it is a great job, no, um. The reason why I'm not going to say I do this. Do you feel a little bit uncomfortable based on the fact that you did have a discussion in grant reporting, you didn't agree on it, that. Company shouldn't be reliant on grant funding?
Yeah.
However, and I, I did, I did review the grant policy last night, did more research, let's make sure we didn't include that, it wasn't included yet. However, based on what we're looking at. They are relying on grant funding, um, and if we don't support them. Then, you know, we need to ask ourselves at the time, council, you know, what best, you know, are we going to continue to support that? But like you said, it is an independent, but there's also charitable status, but, um, the reality is they are specifically asking for this in relation to, um. Sales for, for children, so on that basis, I, I do want to support that, but I am concerned about what I'm receiving bank statements. Um, in relation to sustainability of, you know, that, yeah, um, a small problem.
Thank you, councillor Hartwell?
Well, I think I can deal with it. They say that they want to, they don't think going to the cost.
Yeah.
Don't, um, is because we're potentially funding them under the charitable status. Does that mean that the other fifty percent they will facilitate and we facilitate fifty percent, so they can become free? Or we facilitate the fifty percent and we're charging the other fifty percent, so if that's the case, then we, in the charitable status, are they applying?
Very good points.
Yeah. If, if we are applying fifty percent and they are applying fifty percent, it's not so bad.
I, I think we, we didn't that paragraph. Uh. It's fifty percent discount to the cost of a standard ticket, um, although this is in retrospect, because that's last year's figures, and provided free of charge forty two tickets to those who supported. Children in attendance, or there must be adult tickets, is it? These price reductions came at a significant cost to the torch, and we're therefore seeking a grant this year to assist us in being able to once again offer significantly reduced pantomime tickets. So they're reduced tickets, not free and a small number of complimentary tickets.
Five, seven, or seven, seven, they for the same purpose.
I can't recall off the top of my head, sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced they were.
No, I, I don't think so.
I think they might be for general run costs, and obviously we've changed.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's a good shit, this financial. That's just.
Same, same book, they're about us saying.
Every year.
Every year, but they're not giving towards the local children, even though they say that they open for the young children, going through, calling them like that, plus. Again, as they're elected, or, and, and, I never, no. They, I'm sure we can give this call from them, um, but we never, they've never really, never actually seen that function, they do that function.
Yeah. Councillor Bridges?
That's very good thought, it is me, and that's why I've done this convention better, I feel, wait, but I have not obviously an apple candidate. Also, I had a patient at the school, asking us for the blood magnets, for those kids to go on pantomime, and ultimately, it's asking them to be patient.
I can, I can think so. I can't, I can't think so.
That would be. I would actually suggest that schools in fashion and written suit, and that they are encouraged to actually seek support from this kind of council fund, make them a bandage because.
Does that complete?
It's not purpose, so I'm not saying, but I'm just saying, basically, I'm reading, but I would be happier. Supporting an application on that basis. Rather than on this matter.
I I don't, I think, uh so just trying to dig out, we said that we can't support schools directly because they come, unless it's from the. Well, that. That that was going to be the workaround, um. And it wouldn't be up for us to approach them because that's almost guaranteeing funding. We we could suggest to the torch that. They recommend them to apply and see what happens. I think the other, the other um bit. Similar to the last application is that we we could only support it if the tickets were free to those young people. So could we recommend that the torch approached the enhancing Pemishure grant on under the same guise? We would be preferred to match fund X amount. Um and if that's not, and if that's rejected or not supported, then we can then look at a different route, but it's subject to. Because at least then that that it it wouldn't be. Uh what would it be? Three, four, all schools in St Francis, Scandersworth, Unity Primary. Does the secondary school take the children there? I don't think they do, do they? No, so it'd be three, three different applications for the same project. Council Stevens.
Thank you. I agree that they do give a tram sessions and art sessions in the torch theatre of the holidays and through the torch. But they're charged, it's not free, the public.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not giving anything. To understand me because people are paying. And if only they would think that hundreds of children in London had gone to a pantomime. Especially for the school. And John and often then reduction in tickets, as I know in one school in particular has got a. Hundreds of children, it costs them a big four times. In your family.
Yeah.
Definitely a lot of money. Can't talk to you to. Um. Or do. Half prices to children at at Christmas time. School trips in the middle of the day.
Well, that is.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
The end of the day, if I think. And that's the purpose of the town and the children, you know, but still all that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that, and to be fair, that is the application in question, isn't it? Fifty percent.
Half of the kids for five, five children. Still can get a benefit because there's five children who want to be able to go.
Council Bridges.
Seven hundred and forty nine, not going to the school, you're right, that's what it is. Obviously not all schools. So my. Shouldn't worry, but obviously, if we're only giving grant funding for a specific, specific group. Then the other, I mean, it just appeared to me, I'm not, so my. Any other school, it just appeared to me, obviously, my my quarter didn't get. For any pantomime in the quarter, or seeing what was funded by, choosing to play fancers, but it was. It just appears to me that I'll be showing preferential treatment then for select few. And not the wider, that's just generally in my mind, it was every single year within the, in every school in town. But obviously, it's a case where we're, it's bracketed to one group.
Yeah.
And that to me is, I feel uncomfortable about that, um. It's narrowed in on a particular, yeah, it's just not.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um. My. I think we like the use of the regency to the pantomime, but I just wish that the applications. Are probably not having friends of, finding it difficult to call it, it just is not settling with me.
That's a heart of words.
Well, we do. I just said, I can pick up on that, that's going to be uh smaller than. Normal couple of children in various fields, and you also have, you know, those that are in outreach, those that need it. I think we. Yeah, I can.
Oh, that's, yeah.
In them, maybe facilitating inadvertently leaving some children out, um. Yeah, is there is there a way forward within perhaps, I know we can't. We can try and approach them, but I think the, you know, the learning then is. The how many, have they been approached by the public? Actually, that's the thing, I just don't remember that. Need to do some of the. They're there, probably not, but. I would just let a bit uncomfortable as well, that, you know, there is a need to certainly help all the young people, that would be very good, it's not going to be. But I'll. Probably go back to the mic, way forward and.
Yeah, so just, just using the quick figures, so Gatherswick North Town Community Primary School, which is obviously Meads and Junior Site. Uh St Francis, they are on roll based on PCC website. At one thousand and ninety four young people, and that's without the secondary school included in that, so. Uh and that's without anything else, then, any of our young people that might go to other schools.
Hmm. And that is. They're chosen specifically.
Yeah, I mean, it might, it might be no, no reception, for example. So.
One second.
Yeah, so um but I I guess there's, there's two, two. Two general directions, if I'm understanding it right, we either don't support. And ask them to consider schools applying so we can see that direct benefit. Um but that obviously that's subject to us discussing, that's not a guaranteed uh fun and um confirmation forum. Um because they would have to, um. They would have to meet the prerequisites as required, and then the, or the second bit is, we consider the. Similar directive to before around the enhancing Pemishure Fund, but. That still, I guess, wouldn't answer our comment around, you know, that that leaves just short of four, uh three hundred children. Out without considering any other special provision or um permit. No recommendations? How's the heart of that?
And that we. Um then unfortunately, at this present time, we don't feel that you can support, however. If they reject to fill something they were thinking about to finally have these friends of in the right. Backing up, you can bring that to the front, in terms of saying no, we will support that.
Who are second for that? Any other recommendations or amendments before I put that to vote? Okay, so recommendation is that we, we don't support this application on this occasion, but if um the torch wanted to advise schools to. Contact us for consideration and uh. One of the banners that we could consider, then, then, then we can consider it. All those in favour? Thank you. Anyone against or abstaining?
Okay.
Uh right, that's the torch theatre, so seventeen B uh. Three Pemishure Chess Club, oh, sorry, before I do that, actually, has he gone to go get councillor Sinna? Thank you.
Oh.
It's because he's, he's exited. I'll, I'll be quiet for a second.
Oh.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad someone remembered, that's why he left. Okay, uh so uh B three then, Pemishure Chess Club application. Uh they are asking for.
Two hundred and fifty.
Oh, it's changed, yeah. Yeah, two hundred and fifty pound towards the three hundred and fifty four pounds target of their sets, six sets of boards, six clocks. Um.
This, this is another one of these things, isn't it? If we start giving the money to that particular. Area. There are other homes within the community that might.
It's, it's not towards a home, though, it's, it's towards the chess club.
But participate in that home.
Yeah, um. Yes, towards equipment, um but it's, it's not specifically for residents in that home, is it? No, it's just, that's the venue that they hire. By any community centre, I guess. Council Stevens.
A lot of elderly people and young people together. And they can do these stages as companies as well.
Yeah. Are you recommending two hundred and fifty pounds then? Hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty four? Is that the amount?
It was your perfect, it's two hundred and fifty pounds.
Yeah, with the balance come from member subscriptions, but that's. So three, so there's a recommendation for us, three hundred and fifty four pound for the chess club then. Do we have a second for that before I ask?
I do.
Yeah, there's a second, any amendments?
Yes, I would favour two hundred and fifty, I suppose, yeah.
I suppose so, so an amendment for two hundred and fifty pound, we have a second for that? Yeah, council bridges, was that a comment at all? Yeah, another amendment? Yeah.
Um to get the other, also doing players, actually. With my ban, I don't think. Um and to actually increase the, you know, the engagement with us. Yeah, it's probably high frequency, a lot of the right. Very much enjoyed it. If you're there, if you're in the thoughts of just say that we want to.
Hey, uh councillor Hammett.
Partly realized that it was quite a big thing. Unfortunately, we couldn't um. Stand up on the stage. And both of them, we moved that to children away, put them in touch with Auntie Janet, who was going to Pemishure Chess Club. And she was literally trying to call, give those children a place to stay, and we should be finding. The, the relative people did the thought, we're not going to, we're not going to do it in a virgin, and it's become a way of getting them to come together. It's always a safe place for people to stay in Hennings and um for their home. Uh so there are obituaries, and often they tend to try to take classes up. They have a huge protection, they can't hurt the twins, six and seven, which the older people come along and help the younger children, we can't train them. And then six to seven, uh seven hours, it's the older people that the younger children. And if they want to, and what they're not putting up with is that leave around the county to get other country involved, and the result which is that. They can park as well, set up their own up, and eight of the children that attend Pemishure Chess Club have just um. Perceived in um in Pemishure in the British ones.
That comes to students. They'd have to have a, they'd have a check presentation with the mayor or deputy mayor as well. Um just, just to flag our own governance procedures, so. I think the reason they've asked for two hundred and fifty pounds is because they have to provide one full month's bank statement. If we recommend three hundred and fifty four pound, and I, I would, I am in support of that, actually. Um then we, we should be asking for three months um bank statements, constitutional group rules and or articles of affiliation. So just flagging that because there are rules. Council Bridges. And I'm not putting you on the spot, wha- what do you think the group would prefer? It's obviously, if, if they could, councillor Hammett, that is, they um, it could be deferred.
Now, I need to quit now, so it. There is that. In that thing.
Yeah.
The full amount, then, then, um three, and it's a good for what they are.
So let, let's go to the vote then. So the right, the first recommendation was the full amount. The second recommendation, which is the first one that we have to vote on because it's the amendment, is for two hundred and fifty pound anyway. So if, if that. Is voted in favour of, that's how much they'll get. Uh if it falls and then we vote on the three, five, four, that would be subject to the. Um additional paperwork coming forward. So the amendment is for two hundred and fifty pounds, um all those in favour? In which case that's unanimous. So two hundred and fifty pounds, it is. Thank you. Agenda item eighteen then is the schedule of accounts for June and July twenty twenty five. There's a late um Christmas lights charge in July, July, isn't it? Six months, seven months later. Any comments? I'm looking at councillor Bridges, just in case. Yeah, okay. All those in favour? Thank you. Uh and agenda item nineteen, statement of accounts for June and July twenty twenty five. You what, sorry?
Or photocopy here.
Or her, yeah. So that we look into on a, or we are remaining.
Yes, yeah.
How we're getting back money this time. Never we, it's a lot of paper photocopy there. Um so just to get how the page.
Okay, the secretary will uh relook at that. Okay, same enough counts. Go on, Eddie, say it. Seconder? For those in favour? For those in favour. Thank you very much, everyone. You'll be delighted, I'm sure, that to know that the meeting is.
You know, rock this on.